We will call to order this commission meeting on March twelfth, two thousand twenty-five at two oh two P M. We'll start this meeting with the prayer, reading or thought. Mac Sims will give us that and then afterwards Rich Pyatt will lead us in the pledge.
Thank you. Our dear God and Holy Father, we thank you for this opportunity we have to come together to this meeting of commissioners in Utah County that we might be able to address the needs and the issues of Utah County and its residents. And we ask at this time that I might have thy spirit and thy guidance and inspiration with us as our commissioners weigh these important issues that affect our community. Please help us this day. We might be able to have our hearts and minds with thee and help us to go forth with kindness and unity as a community. And we say these things in the name of thy son Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Mac.
Please stand and honor our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Rich.
All right, we'll start out today with the recognition of the March Employee of the Month. I won't belabor who it is. It's Zach Wall, and I don't know if Zach knows that's why he's here today or is it a surprise? Usually is kind of a surprise. So, okay, well. If it's okay, Zach, I'll read some nice letters.
Okay.
Words that your peers wrote in for you. All right.
Perfect.
If you don't know, Zach's down at our corrections facility. He is amazing at what he does. He always has a smile on his face, a quick retort for everything and a great rapport with almost all of the inmates. Just the other day, there was an issue in Canyons One with an inmate not wanting to leave after being released. Deputy Wall was asked to go and talk with said inmate. On his way to the inmate's cell, he stopped and chatted with more than a handful of inmates just because he walked past and they stop him. After arriving at the inmate's cell, it was just a matter of a few minutes before the inmate was walking down the hall and released. Wall did what a few other deputies could not do because of how he is viewed by the inmates. Deputy Wall is also part of our D R T, which requires dedication. That requires copious amounts of training, getting dressed in hot vinyl suits to enter a hazardous cell to remove an inmate and always being ready for the unknown backup call. Deputy Wall is not afraid to do what it takes to get the job done. Deputy Wall is part of the F T O crew. He takes this very seriously. He wants to make sure that every new deputy is well-trained and up-to-date on the policies and procedures. He spends a lot of time in Canyons One, our lockdown unit, helping the newer deputies to feel confident in working that unit. It can be a little intimidating. Deputy Wall's experience at the prison has come in handy on the F T O crew. He's very knowledgeable, easy to talk to, bounce ideas off of and help when asked. Not once has he ever told me no when I've asked for his help. Deputy Wall is a big presence in the jail and he should be recognized for it. For this and a slew of other reasons, you've been nominated by your peers as employee of the month. You've got the microphone if you'd like.
Too emotional today, so nothing right now. Thank you though.
Absolutely, absolutely. We'll come down and get a picture with you and give you some of this.
Okay, now we have a work session item. Alpine School District Split, Commissioner Beltran, you've got Mac here to help us. I'll let you maybe queue it up.
So Mac was chosen as our chair of our redistricting committees. We had three different ones for each of the new districts and they've met a lot over the last couple of months and Mac's here to present the maps to us. A lot of work went into this and we knew Mac was the right man for the job, so he'll show us why here in just a minute.
Great, thank you and thank you, Commission. I first want to express my gratitude to the Commission for, you know, asking me to do this and putting trust in me. You know, our education is very important and I think this change that we're doing in Alpine School District is a very important change. Was very active in as part of campaigning for this change. And so it was very important to me that as we went to the next step of this in drawing boundaries for new seats, that we did that effectively, that we had lots of broad voices included in that discussion. And as you'll see, that's what we had here. So, as many may know, we have three new districts we're creating. And we have various cities that are involved in each one of those. You can see those here. And as was mentioned, we created or the Commission appointed three different committees for each of the areas to work on looking at what, how those boundaries should be set up in those areas and to recommend a map to the Commission for final approval. As you can see, I was the committee chair for each one of those. Kristen Swenson, an excellent Utah County employee from the Clerk's Office, participated to represent them and represent the G I S and elections and precincts and other things with great experience there to bring that. Each of the committees had a representative from the existing Alpine School District Board. You can see those there. We also had two reps from cities within each of the districts, the new districts. And so we have those there. And then we also included two citizens on each of the committees. So we kind of had a broad perspective from various stakeholders to help make sure that we were considering lots of different points as we went to draw these maps. So I wanted to quickly, for the public mostly, to kind of go over some of the parameters that we dealt with in drawing these maps and the guidance and parameters that we were working under. So according to state law, because of the size and population in each one of these districts, they were going to have three seats, I mean, sorry, seven seats each. And some other criteria out of law, the districts need to be substantially equal in population. And that's, you know, kind of an interpretive word and we'll potentially talk about that a little bit later. But the districts need to be contiguous and compact as possible. We don't want districts to have weird shapes that, you know, go around into different areas. They need to look like they make sense. Efforts should be made to follow city and precinct lines whenever possible. And we recognize it to make sure that we didn't create weird pockets of areas where maybe it creates a precinct that has no population. That kind of stuff is annoying to me. Also, we want, you know, the boundaries should maintain community interest, should, you know, kind of fit the cultural geographical issues of those areas. So this is kind of some of the stuff that comes from either state or federal law. Some of the other considerations that we looked into that was deemed important is how do these align with school boundaries, whether that be high school, junior high and middle school boundaries, elementary school boundaries. Those were important consideration, different kinds of natural boundaries, rivers and streams, ravines. You know, obviously we have a lake in the middle of our county here that is of consideration. Other types of structural boundaries with roads or railways, highways, other things like that, you know, should be of consideration. Obviously, our communities and neighborhoods, whenever possible, we try to avoid to split up neighborhoods. And then also another significant part of this was where's our future growth? We have pockets of our of our community here that have been experiencing great growth, continue to have growth, have forecasted additional growth, you know, they know where new developments are coming in. So that was some of the considerations that were looked into as well. So one of the important factors in this is since population is one of the metrics that's used, you know, the law indicates that we need to have these different seats have substantially similar population. The question came up, well, what population number should we use? Generally speaking, when districting happens, it happens after the the U S Census, it happens every ten years. What that means though is that means the data that's being used to do that districting is really new and fresh because the U S Census just barely did this. We're partway through that cycle right now, you know, being twenty twenty-five and the census was done twenty twenty. You know, we're at least four to five years off of that. And as you all know very well, our community changes and it has in many areas changed significantly since the last census. Fortunately, we have the KMC Gardner Institute and they are the officially recognized entity within the state to do population estimations between each census that we do. So, you know, different municipalities and counties have good reliable information as they're making decisions that is affected by population. And so as we looked at that and in discussion with the Commission, the decision was made that we would use the twenty twenty-three population data from the KMC Gardner Institute. That happened to be the most recent data that was available. That's why we used that. If we would have had something a little newer, we probably would have used that, but that was available when we started this process. Okay, so the other question that, you know, kind of comes up to people is they may think, oh, well, you probably can just draw the lines wherever you want. Well, that's not exactly the case specifically because of that population question. And when the U S Census Bureau goes and determines population, they do it what's called on a census block. And that is the smallest unit of geographical area that they assess a population value to. And so if we want to draw lines and we need to have a population number associated with that, we can't draw lines outside of the boundaries of a census block. Otherwise, we're stepping into unknown territory. All of a sudden, we now have areas we don't reliably know what that actual population is. So for the efforts that we did, the census block was kind of our smallest unit. When we decided, hey, does it go this way? Does it go this way? Is it in this seat or is it in that seat? We had to do it by census block. Now, there were a few areas in the county where because of the nature of population growth, we had census blocks that were quite large in twenty twenty, not a lot of stuff going on as far as they were large geographically, but not a lot of population. But then we went to actually assign those to seats and the population growth just in three years had just exploded. And there were like literally a census block that may have had a few hundred people during the census and now have over a thousand people in the same census block. And so it made some tricky things in some parts, but we were still kind of bound. We couldn't split those up because otherwise it would have that unknown. We wouldn't know what the population of those sub-elements were. So as far as the committee, each of the committees, we had three to four meetings. The committees worked really hard and collaboratively. We probably spent like five to eight hours worth of total committee times. Typically, our meetings were about an hour and a half to two hours each. We had all of our meetings in person except for one that we had to schedule to be virtual because of some availability of some of the people, particularly me. I was not available for the meeting, so we had to do it virtually. But generally speaking, we were there in person, which was great. We had great collaborative discussions. A lot of, you know, different concerns about, hey, is this aspect more important than this? Is it more important that we follow a city boundary versus we follow a boundary that maybe is for a high school or an elementary? And those are a lot of the discussions and kind of things we had. One fortunate thing is all the maps that we submitted to the Commission, the committee members all agreed upon those unanimously. So we came to a very good consensus as a group as to what we felt was good quality maps to submit to the Commission. And in between our meetings, and these meetings spanned across the whole month of February, and in between those meetings, you know, various people, they were discussing with their stakeholders, you know. School board members were off talking to their various constituent pools, talking to the district. City representatives were talking to their cities, citizens were talking to their neighbors. And this was very apparent when they would come back. It's like, okay, here's some of the things I'm hearing. Here, here's what I'm hearing people's concerns are this way or that. And so even though there were only seven members of this committee, there was a lot of other input that was coming in to the evaluation of where we went with these maps, which was very good. In fact, I know at least one of the districts, the South District, we kind of rather rapidly came to a map that a couple of options we thought were pretty good. And those were actually put out on social media. They actually built a survey, got some citizen input. We had over a thousand responses to their survey. We brought that back and ended up actually kind of doing a hybrid between the two maps that we proposed based on the feedback and where that feedback within the community was coming from. So that was a great, great collaborative effort there. So we'll jump in to the details around each one of the areas and how the map kind of panned out because of that. First, I wanted to talk and kind of give a visibility of where the population distribution looked like in each one of these districts, starting with the West District. So as you can see, we have four cities there, obviously two major cities and two very minor cities, great little communities. And you can see where the distribution of the population kind of came through. So by and large, in the West District, Eagle Mountain, Saratoga Springs have the lion's share of the population. They're fairly close in their balance of their populations. Eagle Mountain having just a little bit more than Saratoga Springs. And then you can see about what fraction of seats those allocate to. So when we drew their maps, Eagle Mountain and Saratoga Springs both had three mostly holy seats that were in their areas. Eagle Mountain obviously included Fairfield and Cedar Fort in one of their seats because that's kind of where it's near to them. And then really the fine tuning of those was how does Saratoga Springs want their seats kind of divided up in their community? How does Eagle Mountain want their three seats? And then where do they meet together and where is that combination seat between the two of them? So here's how that map looks. As you can see, you have areas one, six and three that are on the Eagle Mountain side of things. You have two, five and seven that are on the Saratoga side of things. And then four is that split seat that has a chunk of Eagle Mountain and a chunk of Saratoga Springs in it. And you can kind of see where the population distribution is there. Some of the things to note about this is this particular area, the West, has basically three areas that have some potential growth coming and was identified in our discussions. And that is seats one, two and six. And you can, actually, let me see, let me see here, actually, one, five and six. And you can kind of see that in the allocation where they are under-allocated, each of them around five to six percent. Okay, whereas if you look at seat three, that is in a more established area of Eagle Mountain, maybe have a little bit of growth, but doesn't have much potential growth right now, comparatively speaking to the rest of the district. And so you can see that one is over-allocated, but you can see that like two and four, they're not really, they're kind of on par. That's because they still have some growth coming that was identified, but not to the significance of those other seats. And three was significantly less as far as their potential growth coming. So those allocations being over and under, those were specific choices were made by the committee to help accommodate upcoming future growth. And so you can see kind of how that panned out there. Okay, so let's go to the Central District. So the Central District having six different cities there from quite small, the little part of Draper on Suncrest to obviously Lehigh being the largest one there. One of the challenges that we kind of faced with the Central District is how we help the cities as much as possible maintain their community cohesiveness within these seats. Obviously, Lehigh is kind of the elephant in the room. They've got the largest population. They have just over half the population in the district. You know, so they have three solid seats that are theirs. And then there's going to be about half of a seat that's going to be shared with one of the other cities, right? And as we looked at this, one of the challenges that we really, really had was if you're familiar with the geographics of that area, Highland kind of sits in the middle of everybody. And, but they're very concerned about not being split up, not being divided up in there a little bit in all sorts of different seats. So one of the things that was really worked on for the Central particularly is how did we make it so that as many of the cities were as unified together in the seats they had as possible? And so we really worked hard specifically to try and help Highland accomplish that. As far as some of the distribution here, we'll go to the next map here. So here's the map that we proposed. And as you can see, we have, some of these areas have some overpopulation and some of them have some underpopulation. The one particularly to be looking at is three, that's Highland, but it also includes a part of Lehigh up where the new temple is going to be in the Micron or what is it, Texas Instruments area now? They keep changing the name. There is actually a rather large development plan there that will be coming online fairly soon. And so one of the things as we kind of work the map and stuff is like, okay, where do we put this growth? Because it was kind of like, it could go with Traverse Mountain area. It could go closer to Highland or Alpine. It could go towards central Lehigh. We looked at different things as like, which area should we take this? Because we knew that was going to be a future growth, so whichever area we attached it to, we wanted that area to be underpopulated to help us accommodate for that future growth coming soon. And what we leaned on was it seemed to work best that we attach it to Highland. We let it be underpopulated because Highland itself already is a little below having the population to justify a full seat. So it kind of helped us keep Highland together. There's a few other little parts of Lehigh on the edges between Lehigh and Highland that needed to be pulled into Highland to get the population where it needed to be. But that really helped us fit a nice need there. What that meant though is like American Fork in seven is overpopulated. The areas below the freeway in six and below Pioneer Crossing to the south end is a little bit overpopulated. That still does have some growth, but not as much as some other areas. Up in one, you can see that is underpopulated. There's a lot of still growth to come on the west side. There's still developments and stuff happening there. And then in four, which is Alpine and Cedar Hills, that doesn't necessarily have a lot of growth coming, but there was a strong feeling that if we pulled in some other areas, the only areas that we could really pull from is we would have to have brought in some of Highland or we would have had to broaden some of American Fork. Because going up above, we were already pulling in Draper. There wasn't a lot we could do over the top there. And so it's a little less popular than what we would have liked, but we felt it was more important for community cohesion that we be okay with it being a little underpopulated there. So that kind of covers some of the details around the Central. Now we can go look at the South. Obviously, in the South, Orem, you know, is a very large city compared to the rest. It has four solid seats that it's going to have there. The one aspect that we looked at with this particular map was the fact that Linden and Pleasant Grove are at the top of the areas. And those two combined together are about two seats, a little bit over, but it basically gives you about two good solid seats. So let's go look at the map here. And so when we went to draw this, you can kind of see this reflected in the map. You have those two seats on the top for Pleasant Grove and Linden. And it includes all of Linden. If we would have decided that we wanted to say, hey, we wanted that to be more balanced. We don't want that to be overpopulated much. What would have happened is we would have had to have taken part of Linden and put it into seats in Orem or in Vineyard to balance that. And the voice of the committee was, we would have been okay with having them a little overpopulated and keep the whole city and community together. So that's why that choice is made. Vineyard is kept fully together. It has a little bit of Orem at the south end to get it up to where it needs to be. It has a little bit of Orem at the south end to get it up to where it needs to be. And then you can kind of see where the different areas of Orem have been split off into the four areas there with four, five, six, and seven. One of the things just to note that might look interesting, as you know, we have a couple of little islands and we have parts of the East Bench there that are technically unincorporated land. But because Provo School District is a single-city district, and by state law, it does not allow them to include unincorporated parts in their school district, which seems, I think there's some reasons for it. In the context here, it seems a little silly, but it is what it is right now. As we looked at it, it seemed to make most sense to instead of pulling them up to five, to just kind of keep them included with the parts to the west of them. So that's kind of why that's drawn that way. There's not a ton of population in those pockets there. But that's how we kind of put that together there. So that kind of concludes the presentation about these maps and some of the thinking that went into these. So I will see if the commission has any questions for me.
I really appreciate you taking all the time you have. I first heard some skepticism that this wouldn't get done in a reasonable time. And I'm applauding you for that effort because you made it happen, you know? So.
Yeah, no, I told you, you would know why Mac was chosen by the.
Exactly right.
Yeah.
Excellent, excellent work. By volunteer, like you have your own job. This is tremendous work. And I really think you guys did a great job in stakeholder engagement. I saw lots of maps on social media, like you said. The South created their own survey. And, you know, politics is not the friendliest game. And I have not seen anyone be very upset. That's a tough task, so you guys did a great job.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I think it was great looking at the feedback. I mean, my math brain would have balanced those better. But the feedback from the stakeholders, I think, is invaluable to show, you know, where Linden says, no, we're fine being a little over. We want to be together, you know? Those are the type of things that the math brain wouldn't have done. So I think the balanced approach was really good.
Okay.
My questions will probably get answered down the road. I'm sure naming the names is probably something that comes down.
Yeah, the interlocals have temporary names and then the new boards will name themselves.
Yep. Another interesting thought that I had as you were speaking was just how, you know, important the relationship between our cities and our school districts are. And I only bring that up because as of recent, I have a daughter that plays on the high school golf team. And the pro of the municipal course expressed how, back in the day, there was only one high school coming to this local golf course. But now you've got a girls' team and a junior high team and three other high schools now. And the strain that it puts trying to let them be able to compete in their sport. And so, not that we're considering sports as much as, but it's a relationship with our municipalities for, you know.
Whether it be a golf course or a.
Basketball, baseball, things like that.
Soccer fields or.
I'm sure those questions will kind of work themselves out. I know this is the best, the best.
Well, I think ironically, having the timing being halfway through a census is difficult because we don't have the most accurate data, particularly in a county that is the fastest-growing county in the state. I mean, knowing that forty-three percent of the state's growth last year was in our county alone and the vast majority of that falls in this area. And that's not accounted for just because you didn't have those numbers and you couldn't legally use that. That makes it difficult, but at the same time, we're halfway to a census, which means that in four years, we're going to redistrict this.
Yes.
Which means that they'll have enough time to know what changes need to be made, without it being a full decade.
Sure. And honestly, that's one of the things that I tried to stress with the committee is like, look, these maps are very important, but we have to realize we can't have perfectly the enemy of good. And we needed to have good maps that got us good initial board members to get these different districts off on the right foot. But they didn't have to be perfect for exactly the reason you mentioned, is that they will be redrawn shortly. And one thing I also point out is the population numbers we used was 2023, which means some of these areas that we went through to say, hey, we need to accommodate for population, the population is already here, right? Some of that population is already here. So the numbers are still lagging to where our population is today. And so, you know, that's, in my opinion, one of the justifications of why we have some numbers that are over and under by what you've seen here. Yeah.
Well, I again applaud your efforts and that of all of those that have joined you. So my fellow commissioners from the area have really helped with the lifting too. So thank you, thank you all.
Absolutely.
Okay.
And to conclude, I'll give a little recap on what's to come. We will have a public feedback link up today. We'll post on our social media and the website to allow the public to give feedback on these maps that were presented. And then the plan is to adopt the final maps on the March 26th meeting. The deadline that we have, the three of us, is April 1st. So we'll have two weeks of public comment on the maps and then we'll adopt those on the 26th of March. Also that day, we will do the random draw for the length of terms for the seats. It's by random draw, a state statute. I think it's crazy, but Paul has verified with me multiple times that's the way it will be done. So we will draw those randomly. There will be three seats of three-year terms and then four seats of five-year terms. And then after their terms are up, they will go on a four-year normal cycle ongoing. So that will take place on the March 26th meeting as well.
Okay, thank you very much.
Awesome. Thank you, Mac.
Thanks, Mac. Appreciate you taking time to be here today. Okay, now is the time we will build our consent agenda. Is there any of the seventeen consent agenda items that anyone would like to hold?
Number eleven.
Eleven.
And actually, I don't even need to hold it. I'll just make a comment. Sometimes I'm like, I need to hold it, but.
Okay.
I've expressed skepticism on the value of that to my fellow commissioners, but I'm a team player and willing to give it a year like I have other projects. I think a year's time to show its value is worthwhile. And so I will support it today with the caveat that I'd like to see the value over the next year.
Okay.
So no need to hold it.
Okay, thank you. Any others? Okay, moving into the regular agenda items. I'd like to hold number six myself. We're going to continue item seven.
Number three.
Hold three.
Three was the one I had as well.
Mm-hmm. We will continue seven to the 26th, meeting at the 26th. Any others?
No.
Okay, for closed, we'll strike eleven, twelve, hold thirteen, and strike fourteen.
Okay, on the regular agenda, we're going to hold number three, hold number six, and we will continue number seven to our March 26th commission meeting. As far as closed, we will strike eleven, twelve, hold number thirteen, and strike number fourteen.
Excellent. Thank you, Jalen. All right. Greg or Bryce, item number three is to deny an ordinance to amend section 1208 of the Utah County Land Use Ordinance, amending the requirements associated with reducing the minimum area and width required for a dwelling within an HOA within the RA5 zone.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Greg Robinson with Community Development. Just to give you a brief summary of what the application was for. In the RA5 zone, it currently has a five-acre minimum with 250 feet of frontage for a minimum lot size for a dwelling. The applicant has asked to reduce that amount from five acres to two and a half acres and from 250 feet to 125 feet for a dwelling within an HOA. The way the ordinance was proposed by the applicant doesn't actually do that. So just to make you aware, that's not, the wording doesn't do what he was intending to do. Just to give you an idea. The Planning Commission heard this on the January Planning Commission meeting where it was recommended for denial. The vote was five to one. The only reason that there was one that was opposed to the denial was that the applicant did not attend the meeting. And so they wanted to give the applicant the opportunity to speak and to address why they were proposing this. But the applicant, after attempts to contact the applicant and let them know when the meeting was, we were very thorough in making sure that happened. In fact, he asked that it be postponed. Oh, sorry, it was a February meeting. He asked that it was postponed from the January meeting to the February meeting. He was aware when that meeting was, he still did not attend. The application, like I said, was recommended for denial by the Planning Commission and staff. And if you have any questions, that's kind of just a brief summary of what that is. I can go into more detail if you need to, but that's kind of where it was.
We have a zone that allows for half-acre lots, right?
We do. We have two zones that allow for less than the five-acre minimum. The requirement is that they be connected to a public water system.
Okay.
Yeah, I was going to ask about that. If we were to allow for two and a half acres, hasn't even been studied to see if we could do septics?
Sure. So there is, in the staff report, this was when we went to a five-acre minimum. There was a lot of information that was gathered. One of the things that was gathered was a statement from the state engineer that talked about the effects on the aquifers and also the effects of septic systems in those areas. And they recommended strongly against going to five acres. So two and a half acres is obviously even farther along that line, so.
And we had, we had forty acres from like the seventies up until 1990. Is that correct? And then at 1990, we changed it to five.
Yeah, so there, yeah, there's kind of a little bit of, essentially, yes. There was a forty, generally, it was about a forty-acre minimum. We went to a five-acre minimum in the 1990s. Just, yeah, so Bryce probably can add to that as well.
Just to kind of surprise Armstrong Community Development, previous to the forty-acre requirement in the late seventies, the county allowed one-acre lots. And the county went through a very robust process. It just wasn't being conducive to the agricultural operations out in the county. And there were a lot of concerns with that integration of those higher densities at the time. And so the county went through a very extensive public process in the late seventies to determine that initial forty-acre requirement, which was initially based on evaluation metric. And then the county kind of migrated towards just more of an acreage size. And that was in place until 1990. And then it was revisited and it was determined that the five acres were going to be applied in those areas. One thing I want to add to the septic statement, during that process in the 1990 application to reduce those areas down to the five acres, there were a series of technical papers that were presented by Mountainlands. And one of the concerns, especially south of the lake, we have strange districts out there and they have a lot of underground drains. And they have found through those technical papers that there was quite a bit of transmission of affluent through onsite septic systems that was happening through those drains and that was ultimately potentially contaminating Utah Lake. And so that was the concern that was voiced from both the state and through this study for going down to the five acres. And of course, that's just exasperated with even going smaller. So that's one of the major concerns also.
Two short other items. So one of the requests by the applicant was, one of the reasons for the request was to create more affordable housing. We did some research in the Goshen area and finding two and a half acres-sized lots and kind of just did the county's evaluation on those lots. And they were between $750,000 and $985,000 for those properties. So again, and then the last thing I'll say is, the other thing that we did in this process was to look at some recent annexations that have happened within different jurisdictions. So in assessing these areas, they were in the RA5 zone, there was one that was done in Salem that was 916 acres in the county without accounting for roads and other things that would need to happen. That could have been divided into, with our current zoning, 183 lots with what they're proposing would double that. In Salem City, with its current zoning, they are able to get between 2,053 and 5,518 dwellings out of that. So it's just, again, to kind of talk about the support we've had also from other jurisdictions that have kind of expressed the idea that this allows them more flexibility without having to do with additional property owners to buy properties to create these types of developments that'll increase affordability and density in some of these areas that allow for residential uses.
Just want to add, I know we're probably going past our time here, but just want to add to that point, we recognize the need for housing solutions in Utah County. We feel that Utah County's policy has been strategic in that they are aimed, it is aimed at preserving agriculture, but also preserving these greenfield areas for these master planned potentials through the annexation process, which aligns with the Wasatch Choice vision that has been ongoing and recently been made through a very robust public input process. And so we feel that the current policy is consistent with those visionary goals and seems to accomplish what the county is trying to do with unincorporated areas while recognizing the need to plan for residential growth.
Question?
I appreciate your staff note and the packet. I was able to get up to speed rather quickly just reading that. I appreciate that. You know, I like the concept of the 2.5 lot or 2.5 acres, but I have the same concern, the well. You know, if we were having issues 30 years ago, then it's only exasperated since then. I also don't like the widespread nature of this ordinance. You know, if it was a specific area development agreement, you know, I would be much more supportive. To the point, I think it's easier to maintain the rural nature and those hobby farms on two and a half acres than five for Bryce's reason. It's easier to acquire larger chunks when we have five acres and you can build a pretty nice neighborhood of two and a half acres and maintain the fill that South Utah County would like to fill. So, you know, the concept of making smaller lots, I'm supportive of in general. But this is not, this is not the answer. I also don't, you know, the applicant, it doesn't seem to be that invested in this. They're not showing up. They're not engaging in the process. Because I would be curious if they have a specific area that they're trying to do. But just to do all of our entire ordinance this way is crazy, so we can't do that. But I did want to, you know, say that I'm not against the concept. It just needs to be done properly.
Yeah, and I would ask, you know, did they try working with the city to annex, et cetera, et cetera? Because I do feel that the area would need to be on a sewer rather than a septic, right? I would be open to it if they had been trying to work with the city and the city had been refusing to work with them and they were trying and they had a solution for the septic. I mean, there's things, but I haven't seen any of that, so I agree.
Right. And the rezone that's on the agenda today did exactly that. They went into pace and tried to work with pace and to develop property and weren't able to, and they disconnected and came back, so. They did make that attempt, so to your point.
Yeah.
I do feel like we have a tool, the zone already established, that potentially could work, like as you say. But having had family members with wells go dry in the county, I absolutely, you know, think we need to stick with what we've got for now. So, any other?
Nope, I agree.
Comments or questions?
I'll move to deny item number three.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, that is denied. Number six, approve or deny the request to the Huntsman. I think everybody knows how I feel about this, but.
It's just moving to the two million, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
So no need to rehash it. I will make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. And now is the time we are open for public comment. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address the county commissioners?
I just want to say on your last one, I appreciate your consistency. I don't agree with it, and that's totally fine. We don't have to agree. I just appreciate that you're consistent.
I'm hoping for a fix from the attorney's office soon. I know it's coming.
Aren't we all?
Big smiles back there, so.
Okay.
All right. Seeing no public comment, we'll go into closed session. Thank you, everyone.